I call the meeting of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills Planning Board to order. It's Monday, October 7th, and it's 7:30 PM. This meeting is, adequate notice of this meeting has been given and it's being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6, that's second of the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act. Ask everyone to please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll ask everyone to please silence or mute the ringtones and alert signals on your cellphones, please. And I'll open the meeting to the general public for anything that's not on our agenda for this evening. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public portion. Do we have any resolutions in order?
Yes, we do. The, do you want to do the roll call first?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, roll call.
Mr. Aparowick?
Here.
Councilman DePiero, Mr. Dinsmore?
Here.
Mr. Fergieri?
Here.
Ms. Hernandez?
Here.
Mr. Mendel?
Here.
Mr. Mealy?
Here.
Mr. Patel?
Here.
Chairman Keller?
Here.
We also have present the board planner, Ms. Pofate?
Here.
Board attorney, Mr. Mills?
Present, thank you.
Board engineer, Mr. Candiano?
Here.
Okay, someone move the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve the application number 19512 for L&amp;M Architectural Signs, 62 Parsippany Boulevard, Block 450, Lot 4, preliminary and final major site plan with C variances and minor soil moving permit.
Second, Dinsmore.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Aparowick?
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Fergieri?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Mendel?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Chairman Keller?
Yes. Just the one?
Just the one.
Okay, approval of the minutes that were emailed to you? Someone move the minutes?
Did everybody have a chance to look at them? Because they only went out today.
Yeah, yeah.
Put them on the next meeting.
It was July, the July 22nd?
Twenty-second, I think it was, yeah.
I did not get a chance to look at them.
Why don't we save it for, let's save them for next?
All right, well, postpone that till the next meeting. All right, the item on the agenda is application 17:515, Saraceno Disposal, located at 963 Edwards Road, for a minor site plan with C variances. Come forward.
Good evening, Chairman Keller.
Just make sure that you're speaking into the, into the mic and...
Good evening, Chairman Keller, members of the board and professionals supporting the board. My name is Roosevelt Donan, I'm counsel for Saraceno Disposal. The applicant has been a member of the Troy Hills, Parsippany Troy Hills business community for over 20 years as a professional contractor. Applicant's property, which is the subject of tonight's hearing, is a 0.36 acre parcel located at 963 Edwards Road. At present, there is a two and a half story framed dwelling and a detached one-story masonry garage at the property. Applicant is before you this evening, seeking preliminary and final site plan approval in connection with reconfiguring his parking lot to offer eight parking spaces, which will include an ADA compliant parking space. No new development is proposed for the site, however, applicant proposes to dedicate a portion of its property to the township as a right of way. As a result of this dedication, the applicant is requesting variance relief for the following variances: insufficient front yard setback, insufficient side yard setback, insufficient lot coverage, and insufficient impervious coverage. Importantly, as noted by the planner's report, the new and increased variances are entirely the result of the right of way dedication, rather than any change to the development site. To justify the variance relief requested this evening, I would like to call my first witness, Mr. Mark Paulus, who will be serving as our professional...
Okay, before we, we continue, there's, there's some waivers, we, we'd like to take care and get them out of the way first. I'll ask our planner just to go over them quickly and we'll, we'll take care of those first.
Thank you.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, there's a number of waivers that, that are requested and we've recommended. I'm not going to go through each one because frankly, it's most of the checklist and we think that they're merited, given the minor nature of this application. There is actually no new construction or reconstruction proposed. It's essentially striping of an existing parking lot and the right of way dedication. There were a couple items that we've deferred to testimony. I know the applicant will be speaking to the variances themselves. There's a couple of corrective items which we highlighted that should be put in the final plan that's ultimately, if this is ultimately approved. And then, I think, most of the testimony, I would imagine, tonight will be about the street dedication. That's where we asked for some more details. But in terms of, you know, a lot of the items that are typically required for construction applications, we find that they can be waived.
Okay, someone grant the waivers?
Mr. Chairman, I move the waivers listed in the BFJ planning memo of August 14th, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mendel.
Mendel, seconds, please call a roll.
Mr. Aparowick?
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Fergieri?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Mendel?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Chairman Keller?
Yes. Okay, continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to call for Mr. Mark Paulus to be qualified. Would you like to qualify?
Mr. Paulus, raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear the testimony you're bound to give before this board, which will be the entire truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Counsel, I don't know if the board wants a curricular viataque from, or you're familiar with, Mr. Paulus?
Yes, if you can review his qualifications.
Sure, I'll just give you a quick overview. I'm a licensed engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed as a professional engineer since 1997 and as a professional planner since 1999. I've been working in the business for over 25 years. Since 2000, I've been the principal of map engineering. I've appeared before at more than 70 boards in the state of New Jersey, and I'm currently the zoning board engineer for the city of Garfield. I don't think I've appeared before this planning board before, but I have been before your seven boards.
Okay, and your licenses are all current?
They are.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on qualifications? All right, we accept.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paulus. Mr. Paulus, have you reviewed the plans being prepared tonight?
Yes, I have.
May you please provide an overview of the plans and the specific relief being requested this evening?
Sure. Can I take the microphone?
Sure.
Please do.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, so the application before you is 963 Edwards Road, which is also known as Block 767, Lot 30, here in Parsippany. And as we, you know, touched on earlier, there's no real proposed development on this project. This was previously approved by the municipality and a maintenance garage or a commercial garage built in the rear several years ago. There's also in the front of the property a residential building. We're not proposing to change any of that as part of this application. The only real issues or parts of this application are the restriping of one of the parking lot spaces, and that's being done solely to provide an ADA compliant spot on the property. And then the, the real, I guess the biggest issue is the, the right of way. The deed for our property currently extends to the center line of Edwards Road. Up and down Edwards Road, you typically have a 66-foot wide right of way, so 33 feet on each side. So what we looked at doing was providing a right of way dedication to help bring us in conformance with some of the adjacent properties. We initially did a 33-foot wide dedication, and in doing so, what that did was extended the right of way into our parking lot and actually crossed over spots three and four, as shown on your plan here. During some meetings with the town officials, there was talk about maybe not doing a full 33-foot wide right of way dedication and just going as far as the curb line in Edwards Road. So that's the plan you have before you. That's a 22-foot wide right of way dedication. And what that did is that kept all our property, rather, all our parking spaces on our property. From a logistics standpoint, whether it's 22 or 33, it doesn't change the property. It's just, it's a line that you won't be able to see when you're out in the, you know, on the road or on the property. It's just going to be a matter of record keeping with the municipality. So what that does to us, whether it's 22 or 33 feet, it changes our property area, which changes some of our coverages slightly, changes our front yard setback. And as, excuse me, as a result, it triggers some, some additional or new variances or aggravated variances. And that's the extent of the application. We're not proposing to do anything new on the property. We're not proposing to expand the use, not proposing to build anything new. It's relatively clean and straightforward. I think really, we just need to come to a determination of whether it's going to be 22 or 33 feet. I think your latest engineer's report suggests 33. If that's the case, what we can do is look at a previous plan, just as it would pertain to what the proposed variances are, so they would be accurate that way.
Are both of these in, in the packet?
The original plans were dated January 29th, 2019.
If, if they're in the packet, we don't have to mark them. If they're not...
I don't know that you have the original plan in the packet. It was submitted to the town.
We've got one February 11th, it was the one we received, and I guess that's your January...
Correct, and then subsequent to a meeting with some town officials, revised plans were submitted.
I don't want to break your rhythm, but if you have a pen, could you mark the first exhibit you testified to as A1?
And the other one?
With today's date, please, Mr. Paulus.
Okay, so A1 is going to be the revised one?
Correct. And then just indicate revised as well.
And then the revised one, well, I'm sorry. So A1 is dated...
Is our current work in progress.
Correct, and that's January 29th, 2019. Revised through June 12th, 2019.
And that's the one with the 22-foot?
That's the 22-foot right, wide right of way. Then the other original, which we're going to mark A2, is just dated January 29th, with no revision date.
January, oh, okay. So it's, it's A1 without the revision?
Correct.
Okay.
So I guess it would be helpful to come to some conclusion or decision on what size right of way dedication we're talking about, so then I can give the proper variance specifics.
Andrew, can you...
Yeah, well, we looked at it. It's intended to be a 66-foot right of way. That's per tax map. And we looked at this and the adjoining lot, the Wawa, to the east is also 33-foot setback from the center line. And our thought was to be consistent with, with the Wawa line would be the 33-foot. Could you, do you have information on what the adjoining property line, I'm saying to the, actually to the north, not, not, basically to the left and to the north with the setback, or the property line is at on the property to your north?
I believe that has an overall, according to your tax map, width of 66 feet, so I'm going to assume it's 33 on each side.
Yeah, again, so that's kind of where we got to it. You have lots on either side of this property with the right of way setback equivalent to 33 feet from the center line. This lot would then be jetting out and, really, our concern is for future roadway improvements and whatnot. You have this lot that's then sticking out further into the, into the roadway than the other lots. So our recommendation was to make it, was, was, you know, knowing that we would have additional setback issues for the applicant, that it would be ultimately a better plan if you had the 33-foot. But I leave it up to the board's discretion, but that's our take on it.
The applicant's amenable to the 33-foot?
Yes.
Good, okay. So we're talking 33.
Okay. So as long as we're talking 33-foot...
Just a question, if I could, a question, I don't know whether it's for the applicant or whether it's for our attorneys. What would be the legal mechanism, or how would the township deal with the fact that the, the two parking spaces would essentially approach, right? It'd be a license.
And we could do that within the context of the resolution, I think.
That's, I just wanted to get that out there. Thank you.
A license, as all of you know, is something that by its definition is revocable. So if the township ever in the unlikely event decided to expand to the full 66 feet of Edwards Road, could preempt those improvements that are there?
Okay, so, and to be clear, the improvements that would be impacted are spots three and four?
Correct.
So if we're looking at A2 now, just for the right of way location, spots three and four would be impacted. Going back to A1, we show our parking requirements of 11 spaces required with 14 provided. So even if we lost spots three and four, we would still have the required number of parking spaces on the property. So while we would like the ability to continue to use them subject to a license by the municipality, if for some reason we were to lose them, we would still be compliant from a parking standpoint.
Okay, that's good.
All right, now, just...
Just for clarification, does this require any restriping of the lot or anything?
Um, no, the only, the only restriping we're proposing is the, is losing one spot, actually, to create an ADA spot.
ADA spot.
We're not going to restripe those areas, we're not going to move the curb. They're all going to stay in place as, as they exist today. So the variances we're creating, in the LIW-2R2 zone, we have an 80,000 square foot lot area. Right now, we're at 19,458. With the 33-foot dedication, we go to 16,160. Other important variances, front yard setback, 50-foot required, right now we're at 65.9, measuring to the center of the road. With the dedication, we'll be at 32.7.
You are now pointing to A2 as you testify?
I'm pointing to the zoning chart on A2.
Okay.
So we're, we're mixing and matching here a little bit because the zoning change is based on the right of way dedication, we've determined. Building coverage is maxed at, I'm sorry, that's not a variance there. Lot width, 200 feet is required, we're at 100 currently and will stay at 100, so that doesn't really change. And then the, the only other one that changes is our impervious coverage. 70% is allowed. Right now, we're at 95.03%. With the loss in some of the property, we increased that to 96.8%. So those are the deviations from your ordinance. They are all created as a result of the right of way dedication, not as part of any, you know, proposed or additional development on the property. Again, you know, with the exception of the striping, there's no, there's no other activity proposed on this property. If the board has any questions on this, I'd be happy to answer it, but it's, can't really make more out of it than there is.
Have any questions for this witness?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I, my, my interest is actually more academic. In, in the years that I've been on land use boards here, I've actually not run into a case where an existing piece of property had to lose a significant portion of it to a road dedication, right of way dedication. And I'm just wondering what, as a planner, what rights do you see go with the property owner where a pre-existing condition is, the, the requirements for the bulk variances and things like that are intensified by the town getting a right of way? And what rights does the owner have from a planning point of view?
It was not uncommon years ago...
Right.
For all deeds to go to the center line of a road. So the town or the municipality didn't own any property, roads were put through there. Over the years, as applicants come before boards for approval, it's the town's chance to kind of clean it up and make it legit. And that's when these formal dedications get put into place. If this application was withdrawn, withdrawn, and the applicant maintained ownership of the center line of the road, from a practical standpoint, he has no rights to that road. He couldn't put a toll booth up.
No.
He couldn't, you know, so while he may in, in fee owned to the center line of the road, the reality of it is, he had those rights taken away from him many years ago, as did everybody. So there's really nothing that unique about this situation. The building is where it is. It's not moving as part of this. The fact that the property line moves and creates a variance is really why we're here. To be honest, when the site plan was approved previously, the deed should have been amended at that time. This should have been done, how many years ago was it? In 1998.
I was on the board of adjustment, I remember this case.
I was not part of the application.
I think 88, probably.
So it'll be done. And so, you know, the right of way is going to be moved, new deeds will be written, they'll be filed, and 15 years from now, if the applicant comes in to make this building bigger, whatever he does, the property line will be well established, and we won't have to go through this exercise again. So that's what we're really doing, we're cleaning up some bookkeeping that should have been done in 1998.
Okay. That helps, that helps.
Any other questions from board members?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, again, just for academic reasons, what's the benefit to the applicant at this point in spending the money that he is spending for the professionals to do this?
That's a good question.
Don't look a gift horse in the mouth.
We, we were basically required to come before this board for approvals. This is not something the applicant proactively chose to do. It was, it was at the request of, of some municipal officials, I think maybe to clean up or verify some previous activity on the property. So no, this is, you're right, there's no benefit to us being here. And probably, which is, he didn't pay for us to be here. But we are, and we're trying to get this done right now, so that the next time somebody tries something on this property, it doesn't happen.
They are becoming compliant by putting an ADA space into it.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Mendel, this has been bouncing around for several years. It predates my time as your planner, so it is an opportunity to kind of just button things up.
Well, that's fine, I was just curious as to why.
It's a law for one space, but...
It was my question, too.
I believe it was a code enforcement.
Okay, any other questions from board members? Okay, I'll open it to the public. Does anyone in the public have any questions for this witness? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public portion. Back to you.
Mr. Chairman, this concludes our testimony. The applicant is prepared to answer any questions, members of the board.
Okay, any, any comments on this case? Any board members? Any comments from any members of the public on this? You know, one come forward, I'll close the public portion.
Address a couple items.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't ask the...
No, I was waiting for everyone else. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, there are several items that we uncovered when we were looking at the past approvals, and it looks like prior to the applicant's ownership of this property, there were some things that sort of evolved over time, seemingly without approvals. And I don't think it's a matter of use, and the use is established and has been approved by the prior board of adjustment action. But some of the locations of things on site, some of the parking, perhaps for the dump trucks that exists, don't appear to have been approved, and it's an opportunity for this board to sort of moralize that. Again, there are no structural changes on site, there's no, as I understand, operational changes here, but it is a way to get in a resolution and a record of this activity so that if they come back in the future, that's established. So we, you know, we pointed that out in terms of the location of the garage. It appears to be compliant with prior approvals in terms of, you know, the setbacks and the fact that the garage was approved, it's just in a different place than was approved prior, previously. The dump truck parking, and there's some outdoor storage, I think, that is, that is in place that may not quite be zoning compliant, I don't know if you can speak to that. We raised that in, in our memo in terms of the screening that exists on site. I don't know if you can speak to that.
These are the points memorialized in your report.
Correct, yes.
Is that correct, please, of reference? Points one through four?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the outdoor storage we're talking about is located on the extreme eastern end of the property. This is where we brought up to the Wawa property. We've got sort of bins, not bins or channels, where construction materials can be stored, you know, mulch, gravel, that kind of thing. We also have an area behind the, the garage, which will be used for storage of construction materials. From a practical standpoint, driving down Edwards Road, either the garage or the residential dwelling will obstruct the view of the outdoor storage items, so I would suggest it's going to have limited impact on the surrounding community, particularly since it's already in place.
Right.
So this is not something new we're proposing, but...
Right, it's just an opportunity to memorialize the condition of, that basically the provision of the, the code just requires that if it's not in a completely enclosed situation, that it'd be adequately screened to the satisfaction of the planning board. So it's really up to the board, based on the testimony just provided. The last item, and we discussed it in our pre-application meeting, is the shed, which appears to...
The shed has been moved, it's actually not our shed.
Right, okay.
So that's, that makes that easier.
I was mistaken, I thought in our discussion it was.
We weren't sure, we thought, and it turns out, in discussions with the applicant, that is not our shed.
Not your problem.
Right.
Good, okay, that's it.
That's the right answer. I'm sorry, I was remiss in asking the professionals. Andrew, do you have anything further?
No.
Good.
I think he covered.
And we can entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move in application 17:515, Saracena Disposal, 963 Edwards Road, Block 767, Lot 30, that we grant, minor seat, site plan with C variances. What other items? And the memorialization of the items listed in the BFJ planning memo of, what is that, August 14th?
2019, yep.
2019.
Just of one point of info, does the board determine then that no screening is needed on the outdoor storage?
I think that was the suggestion you were making.
I was actually just turning it to you to make the determination, so thank you, Mr. Mills.
Back to you.
I think the board does need to maybe officially make that. You heard testimony from the applicant that he believes that...
Basically, the buildings are actually there, screen.
Exactly, it's not visible from the roadway.
Oh, okay, great.
So we can, we can do that then?
Yes.
I concur. That's my motion, and I'm sticking with it.
Anyone dare, just a second.
Second, Mendel.
Mendel, seconds, please call a roll.
Mr. Aparowick?
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Fergieri?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Mendel?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Chairman Keller?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, board. Could you spell your last name? Or give me a card, you've been scaring me, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mills, just from a resolution standpoint, I just want to make sure that the zoning table from A2 is being used for the variance that we're granting.
It is. That's my understanding.
And if you could just correct that one, I think I've pointed it out in the memo, the one zoning reference to the, it's R, it should be R3, I believe.
Is it, okay.
Yeah. Take a look. And, and the same with the signature.
Yes, go to the other sign there as well.
Thank you.
Okay, Ray Rayo?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just remind folks who haven't sent in comments yet on the master plan, thanks to those who have. We got those yesterday and today, I think. Take the rest of the week if you're still looking at it, or even beyond, if you see something that strikes your eye. We're, we're going to continue to revise, so please send your comments along.
Just, I did look at Judy's comment with regard to a few things. The question that I would actually have to ask is, is it possible within, and I can't see how it would not be, not possible, to make a reference instead of saying, we want, be, not possible, to make a reference instead of saying, we want, you know, all of these wonderful things that were listed, but we simply want, think it's best practice to keep, to encourage all development to be in line with the NGDEP standards.
Right.
Yeah, I thought that's where you were going, but I wasn't sure of it.
Yeah. I think.
Because it's a moving target.
Absolutely. You want to make sure, just reference whatever the most current is.
Yeah.
And I think one approach, I didn't read every last line because I got it on the way here.
Yeah.
But I think I got the gist. And I think one approach to sustainability, which I heard from a couple members, is maybe we need a new goal that really specifically speaks to that and has the policy language to back it up. So I think that's where we're going.
I think in the next ten years, even, I mean, this is our old ones, nineteen ninety-six or seventy-six, but I'm just saying, it's, things are changing quickly when it comes to renewables and.
And it doesn't have to reference specific technical.
Right.
Issues, because those might change. But it's really just getting at, you know, the overall goal of sustainable development.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I just think that since the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection is constantly working on these things, that rather than having the town be concerned about, we want to follow this or that or the other thing.
That was my intent. But yeah, you're right. I mean, it should be like the most current.
I'd rather have us reference them.
And then let them change.
Rather than having us have fights, political fights, over whether or not we believe that rain gardens are appropriate in certain residential areas and stuff like that.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the planner. And that is, what leverage or what is good policy regarding trying to create inducements for property owners with these very old grandfathered in, just solid asphalt parking lots that we have all over town? How can, what can we do? We don't want to necessarily make them, you know, maybe we do, but we don't want to discourage improvement. But at the same time, when you're doing improvements, and can we ask them to put in additional storm drains? You know, what, what can we do there that, because we keep getting these applications with these older properties.
Yeah.
And they keep, it's not their fault because the rules.
Basically reusing what they have?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Without even putting in a catch drain.
Right.
You know, they don't have to do anything with the way things are right now.
You know, it's kind of a balance. And, you know, Andrew, if you have any thoughts, jump in. But I think it depends on the nature of the application and how significant it is. I think something like we had tonight, which is essentially paint on a pavement, it's kind of hard to make them.
Sure.
Do that. But if it's a more significant application, then we should certainly be pushing them to conform to the current stormwater regs.
How do we trigger that? Who decides?
Well, if you want to.
I can offer someone that. I mean, the current, and I agree, Mr. Dinsmore, that the state and the DEP puts a lot of science and a lot of effort into the sustainable approach and stormwater in general. So that's, that's true. And the current state standards for stormwater, these applicants do comply with. And I think the town code generally, not generally, doesn't expand beyond the state regulation. So for a smaller project, less than an acre, less than a quarter acre of new impervious, they're, they don't, by the state standards, they don't have to do anything. So I have seen some towns that have an additional stormwater component, maybe at the discretion of the town, or some language on there, where for projects that are below that threshold, you still have a requirement, a township requirement. Now, you can't apply that to residential, because that's controlled by residential strike improvement standards. But for commercial business development, we, as a town, could, you know, revise our ordinance to include some supplemental stormwater measures for those projects that fall below the threshold for the state. And those projects generally are the ones that are less than, less than an acre of disturbance and less than a quarter acre of impervious. So we have, in the township, we have a lot of those. We have a lot of those projects that, you know, have some increase in impervious, generally a small lot, but we don't right now have any tools to really.
Well, a recent example, Andrew, is the UPS site. They came in, that was pre-approved for a parking garage. They came in and said, no, we don't want to put a garage in. We want to make a parking lot for a thousand cars. That's a huge expanse of asphalt.
Yeah.
And we had no say in that. Now, there are a couple of alternatives, is to require the garage, the parking deck, which adds a lot of expense. You know, parking decks are terribly expensive.
May get challenged on that.
Or, yeah, and I'm sure that would have been challenged.
That's a unique one, I think.
Or there's porous asphalt. I've seen videos online, they just dump.
Yeah.
Buckets and buckets and buckets of asphalt.
And that's a preferred BNP.
Of water on this asphalt, and it goes right through it.
Yeah, yeah. And that's, you know, there's a practical sense, too, for that. Some applications, that's better for. You don't want that where there's heavy loading, but you, if you have some regular car parking stalls, that's an idea, in my opinion. That's an ideal situation. You know, differing entities and different people have different opinions of that. But that is, porous pavement is a preferred BNP by the state and throughout the country as a, you know, solution to stormwater management.
Is BNP way more expensive?
No, best.
I know what the BNP, but is the cost of the.
Um, not necessarily.
Well, they have to clean it, we said.
Yeah, it has to be back. And there's limitations to it.
Which is cheaper than a deck.
Yeah. And I, I've seen it used porous concrete, I've seen, which is also a suggested BNP. I've seen that installed, and I've seen it break up in a number of years. So, you know.
You have to have a management and maintenance plan. It doesn't work on road sides.
Yeah, there's good application for it, and there's not so good applications. But that's one of the tools in toolbox.
I think that's what Mr. Von Aken was referring to, is you have to have a sustainability program in place that a new owner doesn't come in and say, I didn't know it was going to have to replace the whole parking lot.
Is there, Mr. Mills, maybe, is there language that has been used in other, in other towns that would trigger some of the things that we're talking, you know, it might, it can even, it can be broad language, but sort of like you know it when you see it type thing. Have you, are you aware of that?
Not as I sit here. But I am sure the answer is yes, but I can't cite it.
Isn't that what New Jersey Future and New Jersey.
Well, they've been looking at a lot of things.
The DEP are talking about, those kinds of better.
A little bit more stringent. I mean, it might make sense for, to think about this and think, and consult with legal as well, where you have a major site plan or any variance is required, maybe that's the trigger.
Yeah.
It's below the acre disturbance threshold, but it, but you're, it's a more significant application. A minor application that doesn't require variance is typically not going to be disturbing much land at all. It's hard to make that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, once you have the variance, then it gives you a little bit more authority.
The twenty eighteen major development also did change that for stormwater, right? Or is that just for.
Well, it's changing now. It's, I don't know if it came out yet, but again, there's, the state had updated and made the green infrastructure a much more powerful component than had been. So again, at the state level, to Mr. Dinsmore's point, they're working toward this.
Yes, and they're looking how to.
Better stormwater management, so.
Transfer that to municipalities for master plans.
Yes, well, as of matter, of course, if the project is over that threshold, it has to follow the state regulation.
Right, right.
Meaning the permit by rule threshold. Is that what you're talking about?
Well, there's a, there's a state stormwater management, section seven colon eight, that requires every development in the state of New Jersey, once it's over a certain size, to follow these state standards.
But what we're discussing hypothetically here is those that fall below that threshold.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, the ones that fall below it is the discussion.
But regarding the state standard, too, the one that's in process, I know it's the township's intent to, once that is in place, update township regulations so that they're consistent with the state.
Yeah.
That's, that's in the pipeline here as well.
So it's the question for those projects that are less, below the state threshold that we have some. Right now, the ordinance is virtually silent on stormwater requirements.
I think you'd need to look and make sure that the DEP didn't intend to preempt and fully occupy that field to the exclusion of municipalities before you imposed additional local triggers or regulation. I'm not sure that they have. I don't know that they have not. It's just, just a question that popped in my mind.
Well, if we have something that is more stringent than the state standards, challenges come up, don't they?
Yeah.
And I think that's, that's what Mr. Dinsmore was saying, that we follow the state, then we're, then we're safe.
Mr. Chairman.
The problem, the problem that I have with the, with the state, the state moves very slowly on some of these things. Well, we put the plastic bag ban in. The state hasn't done anything on that yet. I don't know that it's going to be challenged, but there's something. LEED's standards are fantastic. There's fantastic stuff in there, but none of it's enforceable. You can request, but none of, none of that's enforceable.
Well, could it be that our planning documents would require greater disclosure by any applicant to what best practices they would intend to follow in their application, in their, in their new building? Something that the Board of Adjustment and us, that we could look at and say, what you're, what you're trying to do seems to be slightly outside of what we want in our town based on our master plan, but you are making a far more green building, even if you're, even if you're doing other things that we're not really happy with from a planning point of view. But from an environmental point of view, what you're doing is fantastic.
Well, one of my favorites is the bird collision resistant glass.
Yeah, that.
We've, we've asked developers to look into that. And that's as far as, as we can go. New York City has put standards in.
Yep.
Not New York State, but New York City has, has done that, and successfully so far. I mean, they're still in the process of developing glass that birds can say, oh, I see that. I'm not going to wreck. But it's not, not successful.
Well, we can put on the Lakeland bus advertising signs to keep them from flying into the building.
Wrap. Do a building wrap.
A building wrap is what I'm talking about.
I was going to ask, and I don't know the answer, is expanding the ventures, developments that would fall under, that would be required to meet the standards that we would put in place, you know, is expanding the threshold the same as changing, making the rules more stringent? That's what I'm trying to say. You know, all we're doing is saying that the rules that apply to development X now apply to development X minus whatever, you know, we're just kind of making a bigger window within which people, but the rules would be the same once we define the rules. So there'd be no bias there in the sense.
We're talking about the goals.
In the master plan, we're not making ordinances or rules.
Right. And the goals.
These are goals.
Yeah.
We would hope would be followed and perhaps.
Which everybody comes.
Adapted into ordinances and by the council.
Yeah, they're essentially recommendations. And the idea is that they plant the seeds for future ordinance changes. And it may be that, because we've talked also about issues of neighborhood scale and community character and building height in residential neighborhoods, that there's no one answer given in the master plan, but there might be a menu of things that need to be explored. And I think coming up with perhaps more stringent standards is one item that could be explored. We have to, I think Andrew has some, you have some background in that.
Yeah.
We have to look at what other towns are doing and what, you know, what is legal if we don't want to be challenged on that. So that's another thing. And maybe looking at better ways to encourage best practices is another item. And they're not mutually exclusive. So I think that would be our approach. I am sensing the need for a new goal that, you know, more broadly addresses sustainability. And then some recommendations that, you know, are for further study and analysis with the intent to get some ordinance changes.
Sustainability and preservation, I think, kind of go hand in hand.
Right. I mean, we have a goal that deals with preserving natural resources. So that relates to sustainability. But I think what I'm hearing is a desire for more sustainable development. So preserving what you have is one thing, but then making sure that future development is, you know, is being done sustainably is perhaps a little different.
Right. Because what I felt like is looking at those guidelines where they do talk, where you do talk about different areas, about preservation and Troy Meadows. It did speak to that, but it wasn't, it, no, I don't mean this in a bad way.
Absolutely.
But it could be wishy-washy for somebody coming in with an application, whereas if we had a sustainable element, it's like a guideline or a guidance for somebody to follow.
Well, it's principles based.
Yeah.
It's principles based. I mean, we've got a whole bunch of things. The greatest amount of micro particles of plastic in the water supply comes from car tires. All right, we all get upset about our water bottles. It's actually improper water management from the roads where the car tires have left a little bit of their tread.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, so if we do a better job of managing our stormwater and capturing those particles before they ever get to a waterway.
Is storm.
We've solved a portion of that problem.
That's right.
By the DEP.
So I think, just to sum it up, it's sort of a two-pronged approach. It's, it's the policy language that could be in a new goal, and it's also some specific recommendations for further analysis.
Yeah. Mr. Caziano did clarify that the state treats stormwater management and sustainability, they're two, two pieces of a whole. They're not separate.
Yeah, for, for the state stormwater management rules. And just to be clear, I'm not suggesting more stringent rules or regulations, but to widen the threshold, maybe to incorporate some, some lower threshold projects.
Right.
But just to be clear, the state has what they have called low-impact development, non-structural strategies on the books. And they're pretty well-defined, and we have the ability to evaluate them with a closer eye currently, and definitely on the new set of regulations. So we do have some latitude on how stringent we want to assess the sustainability or the greenness of a project with low-impact type improvements of the vegetated swales and limiting impervious areas. We, we have some latitude on that with a project. If we, something came in.
Yeah.
That we thought they could do more, there are, there are tools already in place.
So we should do it.
Particularly for the projects that are in the state threshold, you know, over the acre.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, because it doesn't seem like.
Oh, they're there.
We're doing it.
Yeah.
No, but I know. I see that it's there. So.
And just anecdotally, not to cast aspersions on anyone who was on the board, when the Burger King got turned into the, into the Starbucks down on Route forty-six by, by the Pep Boys, I've been there two times in big rainstorms, and the water is easily up to your ankles in the Starbucks parking lot. Now, I don't know if the cat, if there are catch drains and they're not functioning and they're not cleared or whatever, or it's just the old parking lot that was carried forward from when it was a Burger King that was built thirty years ago. And somebody said, you don't have to do anything, because whatever, you're turning your Burger King into a coffee shop.
I have often wondered about that site.
You see, I mean, it's unbelievable.
Why there's so many parking spaces that seem to mostly be commuters and some.
There are some commuters there, but which is, in a way, is fine. But the bottom line is, there's so much water.
There's a lot of.
And it has nowhere to, you know, floods, is what we're talking about, stormwater management. And they were allowed to do that, that Starbucks has been open two years.
I'm stunned that Starbucks didn't do something about that when the application was made, frankly.
Well, it probably didn't reach the threshold. I mean, it was just a change, it was a change of use from one permitted, one started to use to another.
One of the cases.
So it didn't.
If I'm Starbucks, though, I don't want that.
Did that even.
No, but that's an area we could talk about.
That didn't come before this board.
That's an area we could turn around.
Before zoning?
That's a kind of question.
I don't know.
I mean, they're both restaurants. It's pretty.
Yeah.
I think that would be what we would want to avoid moving forward. It's, as Mr. Caziano says, it's like a, it's classic, you know?
That's the size project that we're talking.
We could make that our example on sustainable Jersey, how that we've got our resolution hassed.
In case they do come back, we should probably limit the commentary.
Yeah, it's a good point.
But we'll leave you alone if you get rid of plastic straws.
They're walking on that.
All right.
I think that's a good point taken.
Put your, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I have a question for Susan. I'm a bit confused about what it is you're soliciting from the members in terms of comments. For example, one of my biggest bugaboo's over the years has been the community center and the total chaos. Vince and I were there this morning for a seniors' meeting, and it was just beyond belief what they were going through. People that cannot park in the lot, must park across the street. There's no ADA ramp for them. These are people eighty and ninety years old. So my question is, can I get to a specific area, which is the community center, in my comments to you?
Absolutely.
Or are you looking for something more generalized?
The answer is both. So, you know, I think some of what the comments tonight and what we've already received are kind of fifty thousand feet, general. But if there's something specific, and there's a page number that you could cite, that's really helpful, too. But that kind of information about the community center, you know, we'll add that in.
This has been going on for years over there.
Yeah. So it can be as detailed as, you know, a typo even, if you see, or something that you object to specifically. That's why, you know, take, take, you know, an extra few days, please, and take a good read. We're happy to get all of that.
Thank you.
Well, as an example, here's, here's something I had a conversation with Scott Carlson about. This building, the municipal building, is non-compliant with ADA.
Way back in the corner.
Way back at the upper, farther end, there's, there's ADA parking spaces, but that door's locked.
Right.
You cannot come to a council meeting. And if you do come to a council meeting, it's here. The ADA parking places are way down there.
Yes.
You cannot get into this door under ADA standards. And if you want to go to the building department downstairs, there's two steps. You cannot get into the building department. If you come in upstairs, there's no elevator to get you downstairs.
Right.
This, so Town Hall is non-compliant. And we sit here, and we require developers to make their buildings compliant.
When was this building built?
Nineteen sixty.
It certainly predates the ADA.
The township would have an ADA compliance officer, might be the administrator, might be, but you could raise a suggestion there, and I'm sure that person would be ever so grateful.
I'm sure. The answer, though, is, we have money in the budget. We've got to fix that.
It's always a question of money. Yep.
Always money. Always money. And we're asking, you know, developers to spend the money to make sure that the building is here and in good shape. is here and in good shape for the future. I don't, well, John Von Aken, when he, he wrote his memo, I don't know if you had a chance to read it, it was, was quite lengthy, talked about Alanadex. Perhaps a worse or better example is the Dialogic Building, over on Route ten.
Yeah, fifteen fifteen.
Now, they're, they're, they're not in use, they're not intended to be used in the future, but they're in quite a sad state of repair. I mean, if, I mean, they've fallen down because they've been empty for the past few years, but they're going to be torn down, but that's why they sat empty. They were just in such a, and I sat on this board when that second building that's connected with the Breezeway thing was built, and that's fallen down. And I'm not that old.
I have a sneaking suspicion that if fifteen fifteen is a success, that some of these problems will be taken care of by future development. Just, just saying, I think, I think if, if once fifteen fifteen is in, if it proves successful, I think the Dialogic Building is in, I think all of those sites that are not developed along there will have people figure, trying to figure out how they can do something similar and add on to fifteen fifteen. Just, just, that was when we toured the place, actually, with Susan, last year, I guess it was, I looked at that and said, this is, this would be a natural extension of fifteen fifteen. So whoever currently owns it might be thinking that way.
Okay, anything else? Anything else? All right, Shake Shack is open?
Oh, cool.
I was there on Saturday for their friends and family thing. And interestingly enough, that parking lot, though all the stores are not open yet, was full.
Except, except the whole Foods parking lot was all blocked.
Well, that's blocked off, yeah. That's, that opens, I think, November sixth?
Soon, yeah.
Something like that. So that, that side of the driveway, you know, was empty, because there's nothing there. But all of the stores aren't open, and the parking lot was jammed. I wish I could have gone through there with one of those scanner things and found out